Go ahead and mute everybody if you don't mind. Um, if you're not speaking.
You want this muted?
Please, if you don't mind, and then we'll unmute for the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'm not the only one talking.
Okay, we're ready when you are.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor Council meeting for Monday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We are coming to you via Zoom and streamed on Facebook Live due to the COVID numbers. Uh, we will be accepting a public uh, comment during the public comment section of the meeting and not accepting any of the uh, written questions on Facebook during the live meeting, but if you do write in in the Q and A of the Zoom meeting, we will uh, we will read those aloud once the public comment uh, time is is uh, set forth. So what we'll do is uh, we're going to start like normal with a moment of silence and then we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. So now I think Mary has a virtual flag for us. So if we can get that up, then we'll uh, all unmute for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the which it stands. One nation. Thank you. So we'll start with agenda item number one, uh, just for the sake of being able to tell who's voting in which direction. Uh, it will be a roll call vote for each one of these, so just bear with us. So item number one, A on the agenda is the closed session for December tenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Oris to approve the closed session minutes.
Okay.
And I have a second by Councilmember Ner. Uh, Councilmember Burrell, how do you vote?
Uh.
Councilmember Purnell, how do you vote?
Hi.
Councilmember Nichols, how do you vote?
Hi.
And the closed session minutes for December tenth, two thousand and twenty-one passed unanimously. Agenda item number B is the statement of closure for the tenth uh, closed session. Let me get to that. So the statement of closure, the time of the closed session was December tenth, two thousand and twenty-one at five thirty PM. The location was the conference room. That's where the vote was held, uh, or no, the vote was held in uh, in the council chambers and moved to the conference room. C is the purpose of the closed session was to consult with council regarding a personnel matter. And the date and time that we would return back to a public meeting was December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven PM. Uh, the motion was made by Councilmember Ner. It was second by Councilmember Oris. And members voting in favor were Councilmembers Burrell and Purnell. Uh, Councilmember Nichols joined us via telephone in the conference room. The reason, the statutory reason for the closure was the meeting was closed under the following provisions of the General Provisions Article three dash three zero five B one to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Uh, the topics that were actually discussed, there were no motions voted upon discussion regarding specific issues and documents related to a personnel matter. All right, agenda item number one C is the closed session minutes for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ner.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Burrell. Councilmember Oris, how do you vote?
Hi.
Councilmember Nichols, how do you vote?
Hi.
Councilmember Purnell, how do you vote?
Hi.
So the closed session minutes for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one passed unanimously. Agenda item number one D is the statement of closure to them. So the statement of closure, the time of the closed session uh, was December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at six PM. The place was, the vote was held in the council chambers and then moved to uh, the conference room. Purpose was to discuss the promotion of a public works superintendent. The date and time that we will return back to public session was December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven PM. Motion to close was made by Councilmember Oris. The second was made by Councilmember Ner. Uh, the members voting in favor were Burrell, Nichols, and Purnell. Uh, the statutory authority to close the session, this meeting was closed under the following provisions of the General's Provisions Article three dash three zero five B one to discuss the appointment, appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Uh, number four, two motions were made. Uh, both were unanimously approved. One was to promote Jimmy Charles to Director of Public Works. And the second was to establish salary and effective date of that promotion. Agenda item number E is, or one E is the regular session minutes for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Statute it's for December thirteenth.
I think we're getting some feedback from somebody.
A motion to approve the regular session minutes, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilmember Oris to approve the regular session minutes for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. Councilmember Burrell, how do you vote?
Uh.
Councilmember Ner, how do you vote?
Hi.
Councilmember Purnell, how do you vote?
Hi.
So the regular session minutes for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one passed unanimously. Up next is agenda item one F, the closed session minutes from December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ner.
Second.
I have a second by, I believe that was Councilmember Oris. Councilmember Nichols, how do you vote?
Hi.
Councilmember Burrell, how do you vote?
Uh.
Councilmember Purnell, how do you vote?
Hi.
And the closed session minutes for December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one passed unanimously. And then one G is the statement of closure for the closed session for December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Time and place of the meeting was December, or the, the uh, time of the closed session was December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven PM. The place was the conference room, but the vote was held in the uh, council chambers to consult with council regarding a personnel matter. Date and time that we would return back to a public meeting is today, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven PM. Uh, the motion was made by Councilmember Burrell to go into closed session. The second was made by Councilmember Oris. Councilmembers Ner, Nichols, and Purnell voted in favor. Uh, the statutory authority, this meeting was closed under the following provisions of the General Provisions Article three dash three zero five B one to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. No, uh, no motions were voted upon discussion regarding specific issues and documents related to a personnel matter. All right, I think that ends uh, agenda item number one. Up next is agenda item number two, which is notification of a vote by the council that was done via email. Uh, we received a request to use Henry Park uh, by four steps for a therapeutic riding program. And due to the time constraints of not having a meeting, we did take that poll vote uh, by the council um, via email, and that was a unanimous approval. All right, so then let's move on to agenda item number three. So we have a presentation uh, kind of recapping the year of, well, from October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, the day that I was sworn in as mayor and many of my colleagues, well, a majority of my colleagues were sworn in as council members for the first time as well. Um, running through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, I chose the title, uh, The Town of Berlin at a glance because it, in my opinion, it's impossible to summarize every detail or piece of information uh, about our hard work by all of our employees uh, that happens on a daily basis regarding the operations of our town. So instead, I, I wanted to create a presentation that kind of touched on the highlights. I'm sure I did not hit all of them. Um, the documentation that I was given by each department head was voluminous, so we put it all into one report that we have before us this evening. It's going to touch on uh, some of the townwide accomplishments and awards, some of the grants that we received, capital projects we tackled together, uh, some growth and development, some small business uh, impacts, community outreach, and some other happenings within the town. So, uh, council, if uh, we hit a point in this report where, I know it's like thirty something slides. If we hit a point in this report where you have a question, just uh, raise your hand or, or say something and, and I'll get to you. So, um, an operational overview, if you don't mind, go into the next slide. So the uh, I think it's important for people to understand that the town's broken into like four different segments, and that's the general fund that handles our, our uh, basically the revenue stream of that is tax revenue. Um, and that handles many departments that you'll see this evening. Um, and then you have uh, three enterprise funds. So you have the water, sewer, stormwater, and then you have uh, an electric utility, so four enterprise funds, my apologies, uh, that are generated. They generate revenue based off of the fees and the, the use of that service within each one of those funds. So just so that everybody has an idea of how that works. In total, we have seventy full-time employees, two part-time employees, and we have three unfilled positions that we are uh, that we are working to, to fill. Uh, one of those is in uh, Water Resources. We have an interview coming up for that uh, in the coming weeks. We have one vacancy in Public Works, and then we also have uh, one vacancy in the Police Department, which we are currently accepting applications for. And you can go to berlinmd.gov for that uh, application. We do have a turnover rate with our employees, which you'll see in a moment when we get to the uh, and uh, milestones uh, ahead of us for the employees. Our turnover rate of staff is very low. Uh, it's under three percent, which is really good. So uh, if you don't mind progressing to the next slide, which encompasses awards and accomplishments, you can go forward again if you don't mind. So each year, what we try to do is highlight the milestones of our employees in a given year uh, for their work anniversaries. So unfortunately, because of COVID, the reason that we're here via Zoom this evening, um, we weren't able to have those milestone celebrations for two thousand and twenty or for two thousand and twenty-one. So what we're looking for two thousand and twenty-two is to try, try and hold an outdoor event to celebrate the milestones that we missed together and the ones that are upcoming. So in front of you this evening, you have uh, the employee milestones for two thousand and twenty. You can see that we have a number of employees with uh, thirty-five, thirty, twenty-five, and twenty years of service in two thousand and twenty. So uh, everybody that you see on this list, you could add a year for where we're at currently. We also have employees with ten-year milestones, five-year milestones, and one-year milestones. If you don't mind progressing to two thousand and twenty-one. I think it, it uh, should be highlighted the fact that Ms. Bernita Downing has forty years of service. Um, I'm coming to you today with only thirty-two years of life, yet alone doing forty years of service in a job. So uh, many thanks to Ms. Bernita for all the work and every employee's work. But forty years is a huge accomplishment. Um, with that being said, in this year or the previous year, in two thousand and twenty-one, we had uh, thirty-year, twenty-five-year, twenty, fifteen, ten, five, and one-year accomplishments that you can see ahead of you. Let's move on to the Electric Department if you don't mind. So many of you will remember that we had uh, received many awards from the American Municipal Power and the American uh, Public Power Association. We gave those awards out publicly during a council meeting. But it is worth reiterating that our, our staff are receiving uh, individual and department awards for safety uh, many years in a row here. So that, that's a, a huge accomplishment uh, in itself, and it, it's representative of the leadership within the Electric Department. Um, I do want to point out that with the peak shaving of our electric utility, uh, in two thousand and twenty-one, we saved our customers approximately six hundred thousand dollars due to the peak shaving work that's done right here on William Street. Um, some of you may remember the RPS legislation that we were trying, that we brought on a lobbyist for, to help out um, in the two thousand and twenty-one legislative session. We were successful in helping to get that uh, RPS legislation passed. Many thanks to the uh, to Old Line Government Affairs and Brett Leiniger. Um, but then also banding together with the other four electric uh, municipal electric utilities. We were able to come together and save the, the utility customers in Berlin over a two-year period, five hundred and thirty thousand and fifty-four dollars, which is uh, you're looking well over a million dollars in savings just in those two things alone. Let's move on to the Police Department if you don't mind. So you'll see that there are a number of citations for excellence, citations for uh, lifesaving activities that took place in the Police Department. You'll see that we have some of our officers of the year, and I do want to point those out. You have PFC Marshall um, who joined us just a little, literally, I think only a few days into a year of service for Mr. Marshall. And uh, then you have our two thousand and twenty Officer of the Year, which is uh, Officer Kerr. So I mean, we, we've got citations for all the activities that take place within the department. We have some uh, employees that have passed firearms instruction school, Officer Bratton with a ninety-nine percent. Um, we have Officer Lloyd, who's leading the department in DUI arrests. And I have this right here. Give me one moment. I, I had a each department sent me like a breakdown of uh, their accomplishments. And one thing that stood out to me, take, take notice that uh, PFC Marshall's been with us for a year, but uh, let's share some of these statistics with you. So he leads the department in criminal arrests, thirty-two arrests. He leads the department with drug violations, which is ninety-six of those in two thousand and twenty-one. Drug seizures, traffic stops, one thousand three hundred traffic stops in a year. Um, and second in DUI arrests, and DUI arrests uh, were uh, led by the department by uh, Officer Lloyd. Uh, let's move on to the next slide if you don't mind. Uh, the Maryland Municipal League, so I, I think even some of the members on this uh, on this call are, are part of the Maryland Municipal League, and if you are, uh, please share what uh, role you have within that department, but um, I'm a member of the, the town's a member of the Maryland Municipal League, and I am the president-elect of the Maryland Mayors Association, but also our Chief of Police Arnold Downing is the chairman of the uh, Police Executive Association, the MML Board of Directors, uh, and on the Maryland Police uh, Training and Standards Commission. Councilmember Oris, aren't you a member, aren't you part of a group with MML as well?
I, yeah, I was, um, I'm on the uh, MML Outreach Committee.
Thought so. Any, any other council members serving on any uh, groups or organizations within, within MML?
I am. I'm a member of the MML HEPA, which is um, Health and Safety Committee.
Very nice. I think it's, I mean, I think this is a great time to maybe share some of your experience within the MML uh, community and, and what you think, especially as a, as a new elected official. Maybe summarize some of your experiences with, with MML. Either one of you, if you would like. If not, we can move on.
Um, kind of put me on the spot, on the spot there. No, it, it's just been a great experience, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to go, and I'm excited. Hopefully, this upcoming MML, s- some of our other council members can go. Uh, it's a great opportunity to learn about government, and they have a uh, a program that you can get certified in local government, excellence in local governments. And uh, being a member of the Outreach Committee has just been uh, been great reaching out to other municipalities for information and being um, an active member in MML.
Thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Nichols, do you want to share anything with, about MML or?
Like um, Councilmember Oris said, it is a great experience. You're spending time with um, individuals throughout the entire state of Maryland that do hold different positions within their own municipalities. Some are um, some are city planners, others are council members as we are, some are even mayors or former um, former elected or elected officials that hold different positions, and some are even um, in admin roles within their own towns and municipalities. So being able to learn and put together um, new programs, excuse me, and let, and try to work towards well, in my, in the subgroup, the subcommittee that I'm in, we're working with on mental health and well-being and those types of things. So trying to, to, to brainstorm and work on different plans and whatnot for the entire state, focusing on not only all of Maryland, but our specific um, nook and niche right here in Worcester County. It's a lot. It's great, you know, the experience and spending time with others.
Thank you for sharing. And I know that uh, Councilmember uh, Ner wanted to join us at the summer conference, but unfortunately, uh, I mean, everything's been, being impacted by the pandemic, but the, the ability to attend was restricted to a certain number, and we ended up resorting to some old-fashioned drawing of straws and names. So uh, I, in this fiscal year budget, FY twenty-two, there is funding available for everybody to attend. And uh, as long as we don't have those COVID restrictions, then I, I hope that we can all be there together. All right, let's move on.
Mayor, if I could just point out, it's in Ocean City, so that's
The summer conference, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yes. There will be no laps in uh, municipal governance uh, by the town of Berlin. All right, so let's move on to some other awards and accomplishments. We did receive an award uh, for being a twenty-year member of uh, Legit, the Local Government Insurance Trust. Uh, we recertified under uh, the Maryland Sustainable Maryland Designation. That article's also in the uh, most recent MML newsletter, uh, the recertification of the B-City designation. Received a Gold Star Award from the Maryland Coastal Bays for the work on an offline wetland. We received an award uh, for the best small town in America for shopping and the top ten percent attraction rate on TripAdvisor. Uh, Cody Chesser passed his class-two water test, and Kelsey Jensen received a certificate of appreciation as a member of the Clerk's Outreach Committee. Let's go to the next slide if you don't mind. We welcome the following employees, Jimmy Charles, who we just promoted to the Director of Public Works. Uh, Justin Newsome, Stormwater General Laborer, Adam Hall, an Equipment Operator in Public Works. Uh, PFC Marshall, PFC Anthony Road and his uh, Canine Joker. And Patrolman Odegaard were all sworn into office in uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Let's tackle some of our grants. So uh, we received a one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollar grant from the Maryland Energy Administration for a forty-eight point nine five KW rooftop solar project uh, for the Skullfield Electric Facility. Um, that was, there's a nice group picture of all of us uh, flipping the imaginary switch that was also repurposed for the tree lighting. So we, we reduce reuse and recycle here in Berlin. Let's move on to the next slide. We recently received a five hundred thousand dollar strategic demolition grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, that's under their Strategic Demolition Fund to help uh, take care of uh, all or a portion of that uh, building that's on uh, the Heron Park property. Let's go on to the next slide. So we uh, provided, well, we received a relief grant and then also provided that out to our residential uh, electric utility customers uh, in the form of grants for their uh, electric utility billing. Uh, the town of Berlin also continued its energy assistance program, which is managed by our Finance Director and uh, receives contributions from many of our residents. So I do want to thank all of them uh, that contributed. It goes a long way. Uh, the USDA Police Vehicles, we received grant funding to cover a portion of police vehicles. Um, that was a, a grant where we almost didn't receive a portion of that funding, but thanks to our folks in administration and our town administrator for uh, getting that funding for the town of Berlin. Uh, State Police Aid uh, comes in the form of a grant. And the facade improvement grants from Community Legacy. Uh, Worcester County Arts Council provided a number of grants to economic and community development. Uh, the Governor's uh, MD SERI Grant, which we'll hear a little bit more about in the Small Business Section. Uh, the Maryland State Arts Council Grant, the Mainstream Improvement Grant, and Community Parks and Playgrounds uh, for the Maryland, from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for permanent restrooms at Stephen Decatur Park, which makes my colleague, Councilmember Burrell, very, very happy.
Absolutely.
Uh, capital projects, let's take a look at some of those. So we replaced the pavilion uh, roofs on uh, over at Dr. William Henry Park and Stephen Decatur Park. And there's a nice photo of uh, Henry Park right there. And then let's go on to the next slide, which shows the replacement of the roof at the power plant. I don't know if many of you remembered or not, but we were, we did have a, a fire alarm that occurred because the roof leaks were so bad that it dripped into one of the alarm panels and ended up calling our colleagues over at the Berlin Fire Company to come to our electric facility late in the evening to attend to an alarm. So now we have a new roof. Uh, some other capital projects. There was a new submersible pump installed on the water well number two on Franklin Avenue. A new HVAC system at Spry Site A. A real-time automated controller for the power plant, engine monitoring, a new street sweeper. And kudos to the Public Works crews for uh, developing a uh, a plan to make sure that all the streets are cleaned. Uh, roof replacement at the planning building, and we replaced thirty-seven windows here at Town Hall. Financial and Budget Management, uh, we reviewed, received a favorable independent audit in FY twenty and FY twenty-one. Thank you to the Finance Department. But I improved the budget schedule for internal and external purposes. Provided improvements to the budget process for FY twenty-three. Thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Oris, uh, and all of my colleagues on the call. Uh, presented public uh, quarterly reports, thanks to our Finance Department, and began publishing the check registers in the public meeting packets and tracking uh, the budget expenditures by department. Some other accomplishments in finance, established and adopted a general fund reserve policy. Worked to build uh, back the general fund reserves, which uh, we'll see during the uh, the audit, have them uh, climbing and trending in a nice direction. Identified four hundred plus water meters that were reading incorrectly and implemented a replacement schedule. Many thanks to the Finance Team and Customer Service uh, for identifying those meters and to Water Resources for working through the plan for replacing them. Worked with customers to collect a repayment of utility and miscellaneous accounts receivable. This was something that was previously identified in our auditor's report and uh, was brought to my attention fairly early in my term as mayor, and we were able to move forward with getting uh, some longer uh, accounts receivable paid uh, paid up and, and moving forward. So uh, let's move on to Development Group. All right. So Development Growth. Uh, this uh, Dave Engelhardt and Carolyn uh, over in Planning and Zoning issued three hundred and sixty-one building permits, eight new single-family homes and a hundred and six apartment units. Collected two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars in impact fees from new development. Sold one hundred and fourteen EVUs, which produced one billion, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars in revenue and negotiated an agreement with the Willows to transfer a portion of town property at the end of Maple Avenue in exchange for the milling and overlay work that's going to take place and uh, installing some new sidewalks as well. So that's going to look really nice once it's done. So uh, if you've been paying attention to the historic district, this is just one of the examples of things that are taking place downtown uh, within our historic district. You can see uh, what the building looked like before. Um, for many of us that have been here for a while, that building will always be goobers, but it is soon uh, getting ready to become four-ten social, so we're all excited about that. And also excited about the facelift for that uh, property. Some additional, next slide, you can go again if you don't mind. Uh, we have uh, some small business news, which is we issued two hundred and fifty uh, business licenses resulting in eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in revenue. There were over two thousand hours, volunteer hours at the Visitor Center, so I do want to thank all of our um, volunteers that helped uh, staff the Visitor Center. We had seven new businesses that were opened and administered. Uh, if you remember, just a few minutes ago, on this, the grant slide, there was something that was titled the Governor's MD SERI Grant. And that grant, I apologize, um, was designed to help assist businesses that were impacted by COVID nineteen. So the town of Berlin received one hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. There was an application process for our small businesses. Those applications were fielded and uh, sorted through by our Economic Development folks. And then we administered forty-three uh, grants to Berlin businesses with that money. So a, a huge help to our business community, especially during a time when we all needed that. Um, we involved Berlin Chamber of Commerce uh, in pre-event We involved Berlin Chamber of Commerce uh in pre-event meetings as well for uh for twenty twenty one. We celebrated uh Stephen Decatur High School's Homecoming Week uh by placing blue ribbons um and Stephen Decatur Flags along Main Street. Hopefully, we can build that out a little bit more this year and maybe even incorporate a homecoming parade. Let's see, next slide, if you don't mind. I think we can all remember uh Love Day. That was an excellent turnout. And many thanks to We Heart Berlin for all of your work. Um getting those basketball courts repainted, getting the new backboards and rims and uh they they look amazing. I I'm out there quite a bit and I I think that it's definitely spurred many more people to want to play on the court. So it's cool to see. Um also, I think that this project um is going to help strengthen something that Mary Bolan, our Deputy Town Administrator, has been spearheading along with the Parks Commission, which is making sure that we get a grant application for some lighting uh over at the Henry Park Basketball Court. So hopefully that'll be uh something that we can accent as a accomplishment for this year. All right, next slide, please. Can uh the police community outreach, uh they donated school supplies to Buckingham Elementary School, sponsored a senior cookout at the cottages of Berlin, supported the Berlin uh Prevention Works Coalition Drive Thru Movie, assisted in uh Worcester County, Maryland Special Olympic Torch Run and provided earbuds for students at uh Berlin Intermediate School. We were also able to, uh next slide, please. We were also able to hold our uh National Night Out Event, which is uh a big help with all of our town departments coming together, but it is spearheaded by the Police Department uh over at Dr. William Henry Park. That was a huge success this year. Next slide. So the Police Department has something known as the Crime Prevention Fund. And uh that's money that's received by their uh their golf tournament, their annual annual golf tournament. And they've donated uh money to uh many local community groups. You can see some of them featured there. Move on to the next slide. The Police Department's been active in uh several of our town events. You can see a few of those photos. Here, some from Love Day and some from uh town events. Participated in Touch a Truck, which is our next slide. And that's a a huge success from um Tim's Department with putting that together and spearheading that. That takes place over at Stephen Decatur Park. And some other accomplishments. We created a mayor's page on the town website with applications for boards, commissions, committees and internships. We have been receiving some of those uh applications coming through. So keep them coming if you don't mind. Implemented the use of hard stop barriers for town events, improving pedestrian safety. We started flying a POW MIA flag at the War Memorial and on town uh buildings and at the parks. Uh discontinued single stream recycling at Heron Park, saving the taxpayers fifty thousand dollars per year. Added a language selection option to the town website. Thank you, Councilmember Nichols, for uh helping suggest this as well. Uh provided funding of what uh to Worcester Youth and Family Counseling Services for the youth program. And established a partnership with Eastbound Disc Golf to install a course at Stephen Decatur Park. Implemented operational process improvements around park maintenance, trash and recycling collection, bulk pickup and street sweeping. We also issued RFPs for three parcels at Heron Park, street paving projects and uh improving the uh passive youth use uh pathway at Stephen Decatur Park. All right. And then that's the last slide, which is um if you've been following along on social media. You'll notice that I have been asking for some public help uh in developing the town of Berlin's twenty twenty two goals. I've also reached out to my colleagues uh on the council for their goals for twenty twenty two and all of our department heads who are going to be meeting with their employees to help build some goals uh within each department. And then what we're going to do is we're going to put those all together and then uh we'll have a nice presentation of our twenty twenty two goals uh at our next meeting. So if you are watching this at home and you have something on your mind, please send that in. You can send it to mayor Zach at BerlinMD.gov or uh comment on Instagram, Facebook. Uh council, uh if you don't mind, please try to get that to me by Wednesday so that we can culminate all of those. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions from the council?
Zach, I'd like to just add two things. Um in terms of years of service, I think it's fair to point out that uh Councilman Burrell and Councilman Troy have served this town uh for a number of years and have done a great service to this town. And air to be commended for it. Uh number two, a lot of the accomplishments you pointed out, which are uh admirable. Um but they were done with uh the assistance of the town's employees. And I think we can't thank them enough for time and time again, going above and beyond. So they deserve a lot of credit for all the things that happened in this town.
Thank you. Those are great comments. And I do echo uh the thanks to the to all of our colleagues on here uh that have served even a day or or a number of years uh like my like my colleague, Vice President Burrell and and Councilmember Purnell. Um but I mean, when we talk about service and I'm I wanted to mention this during uh the police section of the presentation, we just finished Law Enforcement Officer uh Appreciation Day yesterday. And I I mean, the amount of outpour of thanks that I saw on social media and I I think that's a that's a big thing and it goes a long way for for our public servants. It also goes a long way when I hear all the all the positive things uh said about our employees on a day to day basis. Um and you're right that none of the accomplishments in this report could have been done without any of our employees. So uh everybody from our frontline workers uh who have faced the brunt of this pandemic to uh our department heads and and like I said, my colleagues on here. So thank you. That's a great point.
I have two things to add, Zach.
Yes, Vice President Burrell.
Oh, we talked about the participation of of the mayor and council and staff and in obtaining uh these milestones or goals. But we can't leave out the public. Those those folks that that take away from their time to serve on various boards and committees. Uh they also need to be recognized and and commended. You talked about uh the the restrooms at Stephen Decatur Park. Uh 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 this endeavor came about uh from a a visit of glorious day we were having, me and my granddaughter were having at Stephen Decatur Park until it came time for her to use the bathroom. She was two or three years old then and and trying to use a porta potty with a preschooler is a challenge. So uh so so that's how the bathrooms came about. Uh she was two or three years old then and uh now she is eleven. So so uh government working.
Nicely put. Nicely put.
And just one more thing, uh Zach. I would like to recognize those folks that that take their time to to attend council meetings, to offer their their opinions, ideals and suggestions. Uh one time, one time uh participation by the public, I'm going to say was lacking, but it has greatly increased. And uh I would like to say to the public to keep up the good work because your ideals, your your suggestions and uh sometime criticism is needed and warranted. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I mean, I'm just real quick, can't really say anymore than what's been said, but I think we should also recognize um the ten years uh and the town administrator's position who helps kind of uh guide the ship, if you will. And um I think I think he needs deserves a thank you as well.
And for everybody watching at home, operationally, he he drives the ship operationally day to day. So I think that's a a very good shout out as well. And our Deputy Town Administrator had a, I don't have it right in front of me, but a number of years of service as well. I think thirty, Mary?
It was thirty.
Yeah. And I think that was last year, right? So we're at thirty one?
It was twenty one, July of twenty one, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
You you almost one more year and you'll have my age beat.
I think Arnold also has the same number of years.
He does. You're correct. Um any other comments from the council? If not, we'll let the Chief of Police begin with his presentation. All right. Chief Downing is up with agenda item number four, which is a discussion regarding Lexi Poll uh proposal. Go ahead, Chief.
Yes, um. Hopefully, everyone has um received the actual proposal itself. The actual intent of uh this proposal is to enable the Police Department to implement um a way to update our current policies with the most up to date information that has been vetted by um experts in the field and reviewed by attorneys. Currently, um Lexi Poll um has four thousand five hundred vendors throughout the country and fifty two clients in the state of Maryland. Of those, the Worcester County Sheriff's Office has been a member for over a decade or approximately a decade. Um the Snow Hill Police Department, um they actually uh are provided that service and Ocean City is moving towards that service. With our current um climate and the laws themselves actually changing um in a fast manner, um it's virtually um impossible or very, very difficult for agency our size to constantly update and keep up with the process itself. So with this, um we either feel that um the component of actually updating the policies showing that each officer knows the policies themselves, updating and having the training components will um ensure that we're at the top of our level um with our policies and um decrease the liability um on the Police Department itself. Again, they're going to go ahead and manage our policies. Um they will provide the content itself and we'll review that and uh provide suggestions. Um they have actually one hundred and sixty Maryland specific laws themselves uh are actually policies. And uh feel that it's going to be a great benefit to our agency. So with that, I'm not going to go over one of the slides. I believe you guys have all the packets themselves. But the big thing is, we're going to be able to go electronical and everybody's going to be able to review them instead of, you know, the paper trail, which we have right now. You have a table content, you put uh, you know, pages and those sort of things. And this is very similar what the town already has uh with Mini Code, which has all of the town um code installed um online instead of the books that we actually had. And you had to come to the Town Hall and flip through to actually see um all the policies and procedures.
Thank you, Chief. Now, we're not looking for action this evening, correct?
We are, um because we do have the proposal and we have an opportunity to go ahead and get a fifteen percent discount. So we don't want to go ahead and uh tread too much um to lose that discount. Had opportunity to talk to Larry Bolden, who is legit um insured with legit insurance. And and he said it will actually be able to receive a four thousand dollar grant. Um if we uh go this route, um they suggest that we do um go with uh this product or a solar product and it will also decrease our um premium by two percent.
If you could just um indicate what the exact proposal is that you're asking the council to consider the 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 price amount?
Yes, it's actually nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty three dollars and ninety cents. And we would not be pulling this from um the actual budget itself. We would actually use forfeited funds um which is set up an account for the Police Department itself.
So in the first, in the first year, we would be covering the expenditure with the forfeiture funds. And then each year after that, it would be a a budgeted expenditure.
That is correct.
So we are seeking action uh by the council this evening on the uh Lexi Poll um proposal.
Chief.
Chief, I just have a question.
Question. Hold on one second. Let's uh Vice President Burrell and then we'll go to Councilmember Nurr.
The question I I I have, could you talk about the training aspect of uh of of this proposal? And uh please include uh types of training and format.
Yes. When we actually talk about training with this component, what they'll do is um review certain policies periodically with roll call. That would ensure that the officers themselves are reviewing the policies. Um taking tests and documenting that they reviewed the policy. We have certain policies um or actually actions within the Police Department or any job that are essential functions, but you do not go ahead and carry them out on a regular basis. A lot of times, we, again, a bond threat. Some of the officers might have one in their whole career. Um so we have to go ahead and make sure that each one of those know the procedures and how to handle that call. If they don't have it in their mind, and and hopefully they do, they actually all have a fast resource also.
Can this training be uh be be individualized? And uh and uh is it done online?
Both, um they are individualized and it is online. Um when I say roll call, we only have a few people on a shift. And uh again, when they come in, they'll be advised that they have so much time to go ahead and do the roll call. Once they complete it, it'll be sent in and documented um in the case of, again, any type of legal question. We talk about liability and um police work. We actually have the seven deadly sins. And the first uh two are hiring and retaining employees. Then it goes to training and policies and procedures. So a-again, if you do not properly train people, that is a target um for lawsuits.
Thanks.
And rightly so.
And I had another question by Councilmember Nurr.
Yeah, uh Chief, I just want to ask, so are are you saying they take your existing policy manual, cast that aside and give you a whole new policy manual? Or do they incorporate the work you've already done on our existing policies into a new manual?
They actually, I would say do both. Um they actually grab what we have. And then after that, they'll go ahead and shoot back because they'll merit with one of the one hundred and sixty policies. When we look at ours, our policy manual doesn't even close, come close to one hundred and sixty. And we wouldn't go ahead and shoot out one hundred and sixty, you know, regurgitate it. What they do is they'll review ten policies, send it back to us. We'll actually go ahead and fit it to our agency or make corrections or ask questions. And then they'll go ahead and set up those policies. Any new policy has to be reviewed by the mayor and council. Um in the end, and they have to go have to go ahead and sign off on it. So it won't be a situation where a policy is just a pop up and nobody have any idea about it. Um we'll bring them forth to the mayor and council as we always have and they'll go ahead and have a chance to review them and ask the questions.
And you uh indicated that you have grant money to pay for the rest of this year. Well, is is there possibility to get grant money for the following year?
We're going to back it up. We actually have seized funds or forfeited funds to pay for it this year. With the number that that nineteen thousand dollars, we will should be able to go ahead and get four thousand dollars from our insurance carrier to go ahead and bring that number down. And we should also get a two percent reduction on our actual premiums for our liability insurance.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, will the officers have access to this on their MCTs, the computers they have in the cars?
That is correct. And the citizens themselves will be able to have access to them.
Thank you.
It would be no different again um than how it's set up for the town codes right now.
But the the computers are capable of pulling that up, right?
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
Well, I just had one question, Chief. Um you may have, I just want to clarify. Next year, is it also the fifteen percent or is that just for kind of signing up?
Well, and again, we'll go ahead and find that out right now. If we were with legit, it's a five percent discount. This is a teaser or. This is a teaser, or I would rather say introductory rate. So I would not think that will be 15%, but we're guaranteed the 5% for being a legit insure carrier.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve this.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Oris and a second by Councilmember Burrell. Councilmember Ner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Purnell, how do you vote?
Aye.
And agenda item number four, the Lexi pole proposal passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Everyone, take care.
So up next is agenda item number five, which is the town administrator's report. And then our town administrator is off today. So our deputy town administrator is going to handle the report.
Oh, sorry, I can't seem to get my video up at the moment.
Okay.
As the mayor mentioned earlier, the 37 windows here at Town Hall, this is, I'm sorry, I'm presenting this on behalf of Jeff. The 37 windows here at Town Hall have been installed. The remainder of the work, which is primarily some exterior painting and that type of work is waiting until the weather is appropriate to do that kind of thing. Jeff did want to commend all of our operational departments for their efforts with the weather events that we experienced earlier this week. Everything went as smoothly as it possibly could. Public works, electric, water resources all pulled together to to make sure that the things got done. Let's see, as most of you are aware, and this is primarily aimed at the public town hall, planning and the visitor center are currently closed to the public. Employees are reporting for work as normal hours. So if you need to reach anyone, they will be available by phone or email. That will continue until at least early February based on Governor Hogan's emergency, state of emergency declaration. Department heads are beginning to work with the finance director and the town administrator regarding primarily their capital budgets for FY23, but they are, of course, getting into the full budget mode at this time. Our FPs for the water meter system, the radio read, I don't even think that's the correct term, water meters is being reviewed right now and hopefully will be going out, going to the mayor and council on the 24th for review. And the public meeting for January 24th will be a very full meeting. It is therefore planned to start at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM and it will be in this format on Zoom with live broadcast to Facebook. But just to keep that time in mind that it does start an hour earlier than normal at 6:00 PM. And then for my report, again, I want to thank everybody for their patience as I re-familiarize myself with the whole Zoom process and I apologize if there are any glitches. And a reminder that Monday is a town holiday. Most town offices will be closed in honor of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday.
Thank you for both reports. And are you capable of seeing any of the department heads that would like to?
And we have got, well, we'll start, she's on my, she's the first one on the list, so we'll start with Ivy.
Perfect. Hello, Ivy.
Hi, good evening, everyone. How are you guys?
Doing well, thank you.
I just a couple of things for tonight. It is Restaurant Week in downtown Berlin. We have about, I think we have nine restaurants participating. Their menus are posted on the window of the Berlin Welcome Center. So if you're interested in participating in Restaurant Week, come on down and check out their menus. Plus, grab a card from each restaurant, get that stamped three times at three different restaurants and bring it back and put it in our raffle box. And then Cam Bunting, who's the sponsor, will do a drawing next week to win gift cards from each restaurant plus $100 cash donated by Cam Bunting. And I am currently writing a grant, just released, D H C D safety grant, been working with chief on this and the police department for some safety measures to be implemented in our downtown business district. And that's it for my report.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? All right. Thank you, Ivy. Any other departments that are on with us to report out?
Chief Downing is still on and I really have one thing to to say. With the closures of all of the town offices, the police department is still open for business. However, we will not be doing any fingerprinting, no tours, and the training room itself is closed off to public use and other entities utilizing that area.
Thank you.
Quite welcome.
Any questions for the chief? All right, any other departments reporting out?
Jamie Latcham is on. I don't know if he has anything to report, but we'll give him that moment to do so.
Hopefully, everybody can hear me, but I don't have anything. Just working on the thing with the RFP for the smart meters with Mary.
Thank you. We can hear you loud and clear. Any questions for Jamie Latcham? All right, thank you, Jamie. Any other department departments? I think I see Natalie with her hand up.
Natalie is on, yes.
Good evening. I just have a couple of things. Mary had mentioned we are working on capital projects focusing on fiscal 23. January, we will be working all months, meeting with each department and putting together a plan for fiscal 23. And then we will all enter this and pile in our projections and move on with the budget after that. Also working on water and sewer capital fees with Jim Holloway. That information will be presented to you during the next meeting on the 24th. We're also working with EA Engineering to discuss water, sorry, stormwater service fees and rates and also will be presented to you on January 24th. We have completed PKS and Company Fiscal 21 audit. Very successful year. Everything looks very good and promising. They have added some visuals to our audit presentation and they will be on Zoom meeting presenting the final audit, financial statements and comments and overall observations next minute meeting as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. The only other thing, Natalie, we might want to say is that we're going to push the quarterly report from next meeting. Go ahead, I'll let you.
It was scheduled on our budget schedule. We plan to do, that would be our semi annual for the six months, financial highlights, budgeted versus actual, but our meeting looks like very, very heavy and not to overwhelm everybody. We're just going to do it either the meeting after or the one after that depending on the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions for our finance director, Natalie Slay?
And I believe we have fire company coming with the quarterly. So yeah, it will be a lot of numbers.
And it and people at home might think, well, this looks like it's going to be a short meeting and the next one's going to be a marathon and what's up with that? But the the thing is, is that a lot of this aligns with other people's schedules as well. So next, next meeting is going to be pretty stacked. Thank you. Any questions for our finance director? All right, any other departments reporting out this evening?
Jimmy Charles.
Okay, Jimmy.
Hello, good evening. Just like to talk about the the snowstorm. We were very fortunate. Snowstorm was really only about five or six hours and then all departments were out on the streets. The weather was very cooperative and the temperature stayed right there freezing or above. And it was allowed us to clean off the streets and do a very good job on that Monday night. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Very good jobs on understatement. I received some phone calls from from some residents. And I think Councilmember Burrell, it might have been you that asked the question, how many miles of street we have? If you don't include the state highways, just for everybody watching at home, we have eight, over 18 miles of street in the town of Berlin and our crews do help take care of some of those main arteries that are state roads as well. So when you're thinking about it, we've got five or six crews out plowing almost over 18 miles of street. So kudos, Jimmy, to your department and Water Resources and Electric for helping out. Thank you. Any questions for Jimmy Charles?
Just a thank you.
Thank you. Any other? And Troy's given his thumbs up. I don't know if you can see that or not, but that's, that's good. Any other departments reporting out this evening?
Tim Lines is also on.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just have a few things to report on. One is, you know, assisted public works with snow plowing and clearing the streets and
we're the cream of those.
Hello.
Natalie.
Natalie, we can hear.
Then also, Ramon Willis at Berlin. We installed some primary and secondary services and then energized one of the two new buildings as your first center on the right hand side. Tomorrow, we will be at the Atlantic Hotel. We're going to start removing the Christmas tree. And then also tomorrow morning, I was actually contacted by AMP today. We're going to be generating tomorrow morning from 6:00 AM till probably 8:00 AM to 8:30. We're only going to run the natural gas engine, not the entire plant. So it'll just be that one engine running during that timeframe. And then also next Monday, I have two of the employees that are going to lineman training school. Caleb Hunter is going to lineman step six out of eight. So he's got about a year and a half to go. And then David Davis is going to step two of meter school, which is step two out of eight. That's my report for today.
Thank you. And while while you're on, just for the sake of the Zoom information, I was going to mention this in my in my mayor's comments, but I would like to keep Tim on and I know we have Natalie as well. I would like to ask the council, we were approached by Eastern Utilities regarding the services of the lobbyist Brett Leininger that we had on retainer last legislative cycle when we were able to achieve that RPS legislation that saved over a half a million dollars over two years for the ratepayers. We'd like to retain Brett's services again this fiscal or this legislative cycle. The cost of that service is $60,000, but the town's proportionate rate, the same thing that we paid last year was $2,858. So I think when you look at the savings that we got over a half a million dollars just in two years, and when you bring that out further, you're looking at millions of dollars in savings. I think it would be wise to chip in again and have that proportional share with all the other municipalities in in Maryland, the the five total. So I would like to ask the council and it will take a vote from the five of you to approve $2,858 for those services for the 2022 legislative cycle.
I'm so moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Purnell.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Burrell. Councilmember Oris, how do you vote?
Approved.
Councilmember Ner, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Councilmember Nichols, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And I meant, I think I said this, but just in case I did not, the funds are available in FY22 budget. And we we approved that with Natalie as well. So the motion to retain those services again at the expense of $2,858 for the 2022 legislative cycle passes unanimously. Thank you. And Tim, while we have you on the call, we we're going to start those regular meetings again with all the municipalities. And we talked about, so rather than piecemealing the this expenditure year over year, what we're going to try and do, and Tim has some experience with this from Manassas, Virginia, where he used to work, is form a group right here in Maryland that'll formalize the the structure with all five of the electric municipalities. So hopefully, we'll just have this as part of our regular dues moving forward. Any questions for Tim or regarding that expenditure? All right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Any other departments reporting out this evening?
Not that I see now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Kelsey Johnson. It's okay. I do have a couple of quick things. I wanted to let you all know that we are holding three interviews on the 26th for the wastewater plant operator trainee. So hopefully, we can find somebody that will work out in that interview session. And then, as the mayor mentioned, we are still looking for a full time police officer. And they're also looking for a part time police communications officer. So those two positions are posted on our website as well as the Berlin Police Department website. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that Chris Carroll will be doing a Zoom social security and Medicare presentation on the 27th at 10:00 AM. So he will be sending me a link. He said sometime this week, I will get that out to all of you. You are welcome to join us on that. Again, that's the 27th at 10:00 AM. And other than that, just working on some end of year reporting and the FY23 budget numbers for for staff. So.
Well, thank you. That's a lot. Any questions for our administrative manager, Kelsey Johnson? All right, any other departments that are reporting out this evening?
I think I'm safe in saying no.
Okay, I mean, it's hard with Zoom. It really is. The agenda item number seven, we're on to comments from the council. So let's take this as they appear on my screen. Councilmember Oris.
Oh, thank you and good evening, everybody. Just real quick, I'm very happy to hear that the interest in committees has apparently increased after the new year. I'm just wondering, are you able, if not, that's fine, but are you able to give us kind of an update on who's interested in what? And do you have anything scheduled for interviews or anything like that?
I don't have the numbers in front of me as to who's applied for what, but we can get that compiled for Wednesday and send that out to everyone. Also, and this might be a fine time to bring this up. We've, we've started having a couple of meetings with some representatives from the BCIA and from Shore Up. And I've been joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Nichols and Burrell. We, we have discussed the Berlin Community Center Planning Committee. And it's the belief of that group of folks that we met with in in the early part of or the latter part of December that we're going to put that committee process on hold for just a little bit while we work through some, some ideas with with moving forward. So we have received some interest in that committee as well, but I I am going to be sending out some letters to let everybody know that we appreciate their interest, but we're going to put that on hold for for just a little bit while we always work through the the meetings with the BCIA and Shore Up. But outside of that, we will compile the list of who's applied for what, just to give an idea to the council where we stand.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Ner, you're up on my screen next.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols, you're next.
Good evening. First, I do apologize for not being able to show my face. I'm on my children's computer and as you saw at the beginning, I'm sideways and I can't fix it. So I do apologize for not being visible. Um, technically.
At least, at least you're not a cat.
Um, second, kudos to all of the departments you all. I mean, when I woke up to snow on Monday after being out on a 64 degree weather day the day before, I was like, whoa. But then to step out to clean my sidewalks and saw that the roads had already been gone through for the most part was really, it was, thank you, it was great. And Friday was 10 phenomenal. You all working together and then to also be able to see shortly thereafter on Friday that the business was, I mean, not the business ever stopped, but that shortly after noticing there was snow, I think I turned back around within 45 minutes to an hour and saw recycling being picked up. The way that the momentum that that the departments were able to keep publics, public works, high fives, you can't see me, but I'm high fiving you all. Great job to the crews and to all the departments and department heads that rolled up their sleeves literally and shoveled and moved out some things. Tim, man, your crews, your linesmen apprentices, these guys, I mean, it feels like just yesterday, I feel like watching my kids grow up, but I feel it was like just But I feel like just yesterday, they were like two steps behind where we are right now. And to hear that they're moving on like they are, it's phenomenal. So kudos to those guys. That's a lot of work and to see that they're able to attend school as well as continue with their work in operations, that, that takes a lot. Great job with that. I think my last comment is here, those committees, boards and commissions and whatnot. It's great to hear that, that, that the interest, the buzz has increased again. Can you, I know that you said, Mayor, that you've posted the vacancies that are still there. Can you do that again?
I don't mind at all. We can post a summary of the, of the vacancies on social media. I'll, I'll send it out to everybody as well so we can get it online.
Fabulous. And just so, in case anybody may have misheard what you spoke a little bit ago about the Community Center Committee. The committee itself, there's a pin in the committee. The movement in the process of generating this community center or putting it together has not halted. We're still moving in that direction. So for anybody who misunderstood, that is not at all what the mayor meant. We're still moving in the direction of this Berlin Community Center. It's just the committee, we're not ready quite yet for the committee to be mixed into the whole, as I'm stirring, like I'm stirring a pot here, but mixed into the whole thing yet, the mesoplas, there you go, the whole mixture.
And I, I appreciate you adding a little bit of clarity to my comment as well. I think if anything, it's moving, moving ahead more, but we just got the pieces of the puzzle mixed up at first. So the committee's still going to be very much needed. It's just not at this present moment, but hopefully in a, in a few months.
Most definitely. Twenty-twenty-two in regards to that community center is looking very good. So that's exciting stuff.
Thank you. Councilmember Burrell, you're up.
I just have one thing. This afternoon late, I was contacted by a member of Dunkin' Shaw Post, the American Legion Post number two thirty-one. And, and they host a district meeting annually. And this week, and this year, it is, it is on January twenty-third. Well, by some snafu, they did not get their paperwork in. This is a meeting that they are requesting a Sunday permit for. This is a meeting that's been going on for years. And we have always granted this request. So I would like to ask the council to consider their, their request this year for the twenty-third, which is the day before our next meeting pending this, this middle of the necessary paperwork.
I, I have a question if you don't mind. So Dunkin' Shaw Post two, three, one wants to meet where? I'm sorry.
At their Legion Post, it is a district meeting hosted by them, has been, they've held, held this meeting years, years, and there's never been an issue with this meeting. They are requesting a Sunday permit.
For, for alcohol?
Yes.
Oh, I couldn't, I was like, what, what do you mean, a Sunday permit? Oh, they're asking for a Sunday alcohol permit?
Yes.
Okay, do they have, do you know if they have all the, and Mary, you might be abreast of this as well. Do you know if they have all their paperwork and everything through the liquor control board that they need? Or is it all done here?
I don't know. Usually those organizations bring us a form that we specifically need to sign off on.
Yeah.
And it is a, a board of liquor control board form. But I don't, I, I don't know that we've received it.
Yes, typically we receive the form and it, it, we call them when it's ready after it's been approved in front of the Mayor and Council and then they pick it up from us and take it to Worcester County.
So why don't, why don't we do this, Councilmember Burrell? If they can get us the form, what we'll do is let's do an email vote on that once we have the form and make sure it all checks the boxes and then we can do a readout on that.
Well, well, can't we, can't we approve pending paperwork?
I mean, you could, but I mean, you could also approve once we get the paperwork in and make sure it's all good to go. If, if they can get that to us tomorrow, we could send that out as an email vote to everybody.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor.
I, I just don't want to give the wrong impression that they're able to move forward with an event without having the proper paperwork sent to the liquor board.
Okay, I, I will share.
Thank you. And if they need any assistance with the forms or anything, we do have staff in the office tomorrow during normal business hour.
I imagine that's something that they could just email to us as well. As long as the signature is original, I don't think that, that's a problem.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Burrell. Councilmember Purnell?
I'm good. Thank you all.
Do you have anything you'd like to share with us this evening?
Nope, thank you all so much. God did a great job. One thing, just to shout out to Jeff Lee, with he had a lot to do with last year. Positive aspects.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, let's see. Up next is agenda item number eight, comments from the mayor. I think I've spoken enough this evening. Agenda item number nine, our comments from the public. Do we have anybody that's joining us from the public that would like to speak?
Mayor, there are two questions under Q and A. I'm not sure if you can see those or do you just need me to read them?
If you don't mind reading them out, that'd be awesome.
Okay, and just a notation that the answer to the question will be given aloud, not typed. So everyone will be able to hear it and it'll be on the recording.
Thank you.
The first question is from Mariva Long and the question is, and this is for Jimmy Charles, who I hope is still here. Yes. The question is, when it snows or rains, does recycle have to be covered?
It's a good question.
Actually, I'm, I'm not sure. Let's see if Jimmy's there. I'm not sure if she means if it has to be covered as in physically covered or that it has to be collected. So why don't we answer from both, both aspects, Jimmy?
Being covered, the paper and the cardboard maybe be wrapped in plastic or something to help prevent with the, once the paper and cardboard gets wet, it no longer really becomes recyclable. And, but the other parts of the recycling, the metal, that all can be left out to be wet.
Thank you. And I think the operational question of picking it up, we, as noted by the work that was done during the last snowstorm, crews did make a, a valiant effort to get out and pick those up the, the same day. So I hope that addresses the question. Let's move on.
The next question is also from Marie Valong and is any idea when there will be ethics training? I'm, I'm just going to reach out on this one and say, typically we have someone who comes to the building here and does that training. Obviously with the ongoing pandemic, that has not been possible. I don't know, but I believe that Jeff has been looking into something. The only thing I could say is keep, stay, stay tuned.
And we, we have been, we offer that usually by annually. So every, every other year, we offer, offer ethics training to town staff, department heads and the council and our Ethics Commission. So it is something we're trying to get accomplished and it is something that we do outsource. So thank you. Great question. Any other questions that have been typed in?
No, that's, that's it. I don't see any others and there are no hands up.
Okay, and have we received any questions in the mail or submitted electronically?
I have not.
Okay, any comments?
The, the only comment that was received, I forwarded on to the Mayor and Council earlier today.
Can we read that into the record if you don't mind?
I do not have that in front of me, I'm afraid.
Then let's just, what we'll do is we'll put it in the meeting packet as a written comment. Is that okay for the next meeting?
It can be incorporated into the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the press?
Nothing that I've seen.
All right, and then Councilmember Burrell, you're up.
Move to a jury.
And all in favor, we can do that as a, a group vote.
Sorry, we do have one hand up.
I think it's.
Oh, that was just me for.
Just saying hi. Aren't you cold, Jack? You're sitting out in front of Town Hall. Aren't you cold?
Yeah, it's getting a little chilly. I'm glad the meeting's over.
I'll bring a jacket downstairs. All right, see you everyone.